Testing, testing. Are we good? Testing, testing. We'll get started in about two minutes. Evening, everybody. It is Monday, October 23, 2023. I just want to be sure if the microphone is working. I can hardly hear it in here. Just want to be sure it's working back there. Can everyone hear me okay? Great, excellent. Then we'll proceed. Again, Monday, October 23, 2023. It's 5:30 PM, and this is a public meeting of the School Board of West Bend Joint School District Number One. More than 24 hours prior to the meeting, notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of this meeting was posted at the entrance doors, at the Education Service Center, and at the West Bend Community Memorial Library. A copy was also sent to the Daily News, WIBD, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources that have requested notice of our meetings. I'll pause to ask Superintendent Wimmer to confirm that this meeting was properly posted.
Yes, it was.
Okay, thank you. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We recognize the quorum of our board present with all of our seven members present. With that, the next item on our agenda is to approve this agenda, which was circulated in advance. I would move to approve this agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kelly. Motion and second to approve this agenda. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any oppose? Thank you. That motion carries. We move on to public participation, and tonight I have five participant comment cards. I'll just pause to see if there are any others. I don't see any others in the audience. So with that, I will give the president's announcement per Board Policy 187. We've come to the public participation portion of our agenda. Board Policy 187 prescribes a nature and procedures for this segment. I summarize the policy at this time, but copies of the policy are available in the back of the room, and I urge you to familiarize yourself with the policy in its entirety. Residents of the district, parents of district, parents of children in district schools, and employees of the district may participate. Participants desiring to address the board should obtain and complete a participant comment card near the entry and turn it over to the president prior to the meeting or when allowed by the president. Participants may comment concerning an agenda item or a non-agenda item. Each participant will be called to the podium and given three minutes to speak. The participant must state his or her name and relation to the district. This information will appear in the minutes of the meeting. The board will not engage in debate concerning the remarks or take immediate action. The board may refer the matter to the superintendent, a committee, or take the remarks into consideration in future action. Board Policy 872 provides a formal process for citizen complaints, and Board Policy 520 provides a formal process for employee complaints. The board recommends use of these procedures as a guarantee of fair and timely response. I'll now invite the participants forward to speak. There is a visible timer behind me to help you manage your time. Also, given the number of participants, I will alert the speakers as to who's up next and who's on deck, and to help ensure that all participants are heard and that this meeting runs efficiently, I would ask that you please abstain from conversation, comment, or applause during or after public participation comments. So tonight, we have five speakers. Our first speaker tonight is Jodi Geenan, and on deck is Claudia Bossi. And Ms. Geenan, if you, it indicates here that you are a resident of the district. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So if you could please state your name, and then the next three minutes are yours.
Jodi Geenan from West Bend. I am here regarding the Curriculum Committee meeting of October 17 concerning books. The only person truly representing families and children was school board member Melanie Ergo. She appeared to be the only one who knew that the meeting was supposed to be about whether the 17 books on the list met the criteria decided by the school board and administration for the safety and welfare of the fifth grade children. The others appeared to be defending the books above all costs. For example, regarding inappropriate language in three books, school board member June Krueger said, "I did ask a couple of folks on these swear words," acknowledging that the words are swear words, yet having no problem violating the standard set that zero swear words should appear in the fifth grade books. Director of Curriculum True Blood said, "What we did here as a committee and with our teachers is tell you what those words were because we don't quite know if those are obscene words or not. If you are having trouble differentiating an obscene word from a decent word, maybe the litmus test should be that if the words are questionable, it's better to err on the side of caution for the sake of the minds of the children and remove the books from the list." Regarding the books on the list being heavy topics for fifth graders, after Mrs. Ergo gave examples of bullying, homelessness, disability, divorce, racism, police encounters, violence, a drunk dad shooting at his wife and son, an illegal dog fighting ring, and even an example from a parent review on Amazon of an incident where two kids found a way to get revenge on a bully by somehow getting leeches on his genitals, the director of curriculum said, "What is recorded in the parent slip here oftentimes," and I haven't read all of them, and I won't ever, "but I can tell you that they are singular incidents in a plot, that it is a daimon, or it is a moment that is a pivot in a story that makes the story turn a certain way for a very specific purpose for the writer. So I will say that many of these books, if that was a moment that is difficult, it is singular, and it changes the path of the characters and what they experienced, so I can guarantee you that there is not a propensity of what I consider to be hardship in many of the plots, so I'm rest assured there." How can she guarantee anything about books after admitting she won't ever read them? Moreover, it only takes a singular incident to traumatize a person for life. Heaven forbid that a child should have to be shot at by his parent more than once, for example, in order to be taken seriously. Mrs. Krueger defended the heavy topics by stating, "I think there's a lot of value in learning about or being exposed to families that are different than your own." Yet, even with Mrs. Ergo's urging to add some lighthearted topics, no one offered support for providing such choices to families who may not be ready to subject their fifth grade children to the heavy topics or experiences of other people's trauma, nor to trigger more of their own trauma. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We invite forward, let's turn it over here, Claudia Bossi, and on deck is Jason Pennerman. And Ms. Bossi indicates here that you are a resident of the district. Is that correct?
Yes.
Great. So if you could state your name, and then the next three minutes are-
Claudia Bossi.
Thank you. The next three minutes are yours.
Hi, I'm here on behalf of Carol Hager, who I think is familiar to everybody in the book club Curriculum Matters. Going to share her speech. She has some concerns about inappropriate words and matters of the books that are indicated and not mentioned as far as the summary list or the summary chart. And to share some of Carol Hager's words, there are some words that are defined as swear words. They maybe weren't caught by individuals that were reviewing, but they might be of concern to certain parents. In the book, In a Fish in a Tree, there are words that are listed that should be shared with parents, such as my god, losers, freaks, dumb, stupid. A Japanese student's speech and accent are depicted as being broken caveman English, according to reviewer in Goodreads.com. There's also a fight in the book that involves the main character who's thrown to the ground, and Ally's friend comes to her rescue by hitting one of the bullies, and that is not mentioned in the summary chart. Goodreads.com also mentions about another book, Flight of the Puffin, that deals with non-binary characters and encourages transgender, non-bonary acceptance, and these characters are struggling with their identity, which is a whole topic that's very difficult for sensitive fifth graders. Another book, Ben Bee and the Teacher Griefer, also has a non-binary character. The main character wants to be referred by a certain pronoun, and Ms. Jay, however, is conflicted about using that pronoun for fear that Ron DeSantis might come after her. There's other depictions of non-binary characters that are not mentioned in the summary chart. Another book called Rain Rain, we has words such as retard, for God's sake. The reviewer also that had concerns about the book mentioned that autistic people are described as being emotionless, and we feel that that kind of topic as far as autism and an opinion can leave a bad impression with fifth graders. Another book called Rules is also full of stereotypes. There were three individuals that themselves are autistic. They had concerns about the book mentioning the word retard. There are other books included in the fifth grade book club summary chart that missed certain words that weren't included, such as idiot, stupid, fatso, dork, jerk, geez, and the stink's a big one. So a language such as that should be mentioned in the summary chart. Also, the subject of autism in some cases is not handled sensitively, and Carol also will share this speech in its full content, as well as some suggestions she has as far as classical literature, so we'll get that to the school board. Thank you.
Thank you. Our third speaker tonight is Jason Pennerman, and on deck is Allison Guzan. And Mr. Pennerman, you've indicated that you're a resident of the district, a parent or guardian, and an employee of the district. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Great. If you could just state your name, and then the next three minutes are yours.
Thank you. West Bend School Board, thank you for providing time for public comments. I know you don't have to do that. My name is Jason Pennerman. I've been a West Bend teacher and WBSD and resident since 2001. My child has attended WBSD since kindergarten. I'm one of the several teachers on the WBSD WBEA negotiating team that met with the school board, school district representatives over multiple meetings. To complete, to compete, a business must pay employees competitive salaries for their skill sets because turnover costs performance and reputation. Same in schools. Moving on. Prior to negotiations, the district announced unused teacher HRA accounts, their health accounts, that contain like 0 to 3,000 to $9,000 that teachers had set aside will be taken by the district after January. Look forward to that report. The inflation rate for, was around 8% for these negotiations, and the only teachers who really received a true 8% increase are the new teachers, years one through four. After that, it's a steady decline. So I've been here since 2001, and I'm getting 5.2. Another colleague with similar years, but CLS certified, is going to get 4.3. The district continues to use an imaginary base wage to calculate salary adjustments, and that's the problem here. The base wage to calculate my salary adjustment is about 30,000 less than my true salary. This is a continuing issue, to use this fictitious base wage calculation based on salaries that do not even exist to calculate salary increases. It's far less than the vast majority of full-time teachers actually earn. It creates a false ceiling for the majority of salaries, and then from there, the district continues to use this baseless argument that they can't go higher, so the money is then moved in a place where negotiations can't touch, and this is stipends. Stipends come with strings attached, and we can talk about that later. I spoke to the board last year about the district's use of base wages during negotiations. All school board members are now aware of the district's use of base wages to calculate inflation adjustments to salaries. If WBSD continues to use base wage calculations for salary adjustments, the board is complicit in preventing teachers' wages from actually being adjusted to match inflation. Thank you.
Thank you. Allison Guzan is our next speaker, and our final speaker will be Tanya Lore. And you've indicated that you are a resident of the district and an employee of the district. Is that correct?
Yes.
Great. If you could state your name, and then the next three minutes are yours.
Allison Guzan. Ladies and gentlemen of the school board, I stand before you as a dedicated teacher to advocate for our educators and the students we serve. While I appreciate the efforts to provide a raise to our teachers, it's imperative to address a pressing issue that is causing substantial distress within our teaching community. The raise we receive falls far short of the 8% cost of living increase in our area. Our teachers are the lifeblood of our schools. We devote our time, our energy, and our expertise to educate our students. However, with the rising cost of living, many are struggling to make ends meet. It's taken a toll on our morale, our health, and our overall job satisfaction. As teachers, we're dedicated to providing top-quality education. Fair pay is not just a matter of justice, it's critical and crucial to keep talented educators who are the foundation of our students' success. Yet, the stress of financial strain and growing job demands is driving our experienced teachers to the brink, risking burnout. This loss of expertise harms our ability to offer a high-quality education to our students. As a mother of a young child, I'm concerned that the inability for salaries in our district to at least meet the cost of living will mean fewer and fewer competent, qualified adults who'll be able to afford to teach in this district. Teachers can no longer just grin and bear it. Many will need to search for an occupation whose hours and pay will allow them to raise a family of their own. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to a day when we can collectively address the concerns of our educators and ultimately, our students.
Thank you. And our final speaker tonight is Tanya Lore. And Ms. Lore, as you come to the podium, you've indicated on your comment card that you're an employee of the district. Is that correct?
Yes, I am.
Great. And if you could state your name, and then the next three minutes are yours.
My name is Tanya Lore, and I am a teacher in the district. Tonight, I am speaking in my role as the president of the WBEA and member of its negotiating team. It is unfortunate that the board only heard one side of the story when making crucial decisions about salary adjustments for teachers. Perhaps hearing the other side will lead to future decisions that will truly help attract and retain teachers to this district in a market where doing so takes more than empty promises and questionable math. The salary adjustment imposed by the district failed to match the increase in the cost of living for the vast majority of the district's teachers, causing them to continue to lose buying power even as their years of experience and expertise increase. In his presentation to the board, the district chose to include expertise stipends in its calculations of pay increases, but even when adding in these stipends, which teachers spend their own time and their own money to gain, the approximate percent of teachers who made it to the cost of living increase is a mere 38%. That means that even in the best-case scenario, the district could present approximately 62% of its teachers still did not make it to a cost of living increase this year. This inability to match the cost of living came in the same year that the district decided to decrease its spending on our health benefits, as well as to take without reimbursement the HRA dollars earned and banked by teachers over the last several years. Both of these decisions were made with the promise that doing so would result in large increases to teacher salaries. Most people would assume that a large increase to a salary means it would at least surpass the cost of living, and yet the increase for the majority of the district's teachers did not. Teachers do understand the budget constraints of the district, and that even with a few extra million dollars from the state this year, that balancing the budget is tough. But along with your ability to choose to impose on teachers what you feel you can afford, is the ability to choose how you message what you are imposing. When you choose to frame a less-than-cost-of-living raise as a huge increase in pay, it tells teachers that this is as good as it gets, and if you stay here, what you can hope for at best is a below-the-cost-of-living adjustment each year. This is not a selling point that will retain teachers, especially in a market lacking supply. The underlying message was that teachers should just be grateful they are getting an increase at all, as it beats all the competition. Except basic capitalist principles tells you this isn't true. If the district's compensation for the work required of teachers was competitive in the overall job market, then you'd have lines of qualified people applying for the rare job openings that would occur. Instead, the district still has open teaching positions this far into the school year and had to fill other openings with people without the required degree or license. So at bare minimum, can we please stop the false narrative that teachers are getting cushy pay raises and cushy benefits, as this is clearly not the case based on the difficulties in filling teaching positions? If there was ever a year to match the cost of living for all teachers in the district, this was the year, and the district failed to do that. That's the vital other side of the story.
Thank you for your comments. So Ms. Lore was our last speaker tonight. Just want to thank all those in attendance for moving through the process in an efficient and orderly manner. Mr. Harder, it looks like you're changing up some-
Just making a change real quick.
All right, perfect. So with that, that concludes our public, the public participation portion of our agenda. So let's move then to the consent agenda. On our consent agenda tonight, we have minutes of the October 9th, 2023 regular board meeting and executive session. We have minutes of the October 17th, 2023 special board meeting. There's one contract for approval, one resignation, zero retirements, and also early college credit program course requests, as well as Start College Now course requests. Any questions on any of the items on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would move to approve this consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Melanie. We have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any oppose? Thank you. That motion carries. Next on our agenda are reports, and we start with school reports for early learning. And Superintendent Wimmer, I have Matt Durant, our 4K early learning administrator, and Jamie Malsum, our Head Start administrator, are going to walk us through this presentation. Is that correct?
They will. While they lead many of our programs, I know there's a whole bunch of 4K staff in this audience who are happy to have them speak on their behalf, so I'm sure they'll acknowledge them as well as part of those who work in collaboration with us to provide early learning in our district.
Thank you. My name is Jamie Malsum. This isn't turned on. I'm the Head Start administrator, and tonight Matt and I are going to speak about our program, our early learning program, and kind of the three different options underneath that early learning umbrella. I can tell you all that when we talk about the early learning program, we use the word unique a lot when we're explaining it to community members or families, and I'm hoping that after our short presentation this evening, you guys will have kind of a better understanding of the why behind us using that adjective all the time. So the mission of the early learning program in a nutshell is that we want to continue to honor the spirit of preschool students, our three- and four-year-olds. It's such a precious time in their life. We emphasize learning through play and nature-based experiences, active learning, and we focus on those early development skills. A lot of language, we talk a lot in our program because we know how important that early language development is for everybody, and we want to get our students ready to be successful when they transition to kindergarten. So we could take a little peek here at some of these pictures. The first picture, that little girl there is hugging a tree. I think that tree gave her the sugar she needed at that moment, but they were doing some maple sugaring there in that picture. And we talk about learning through nature a lot too in our program, and not every site has the same level, but what all of our sites do, the picture down there, kind of in the middle on the left, we have traditional playgrounds, and then we also have kind of our nature playground, and you can imagine, we gather all kinds of different things, from sticks to logs to whatever we can find to give that nature-based experience, as well as our traditional experience there too. All right. So the Head Start program, I'm going to speak to that first. It's a federally funded program. You qualify for the program based on income guidelines, as well as a few other criteria that I will be bringing to the board in March, the selection criteria. But we also have two governing boards. So the school board is one of them, as well as the Washington County Head Start Policy Council. That council is made up of community members, parents of students in our program, and we also have a school board representative on our policy council that acts as kind of that conduit between both of the governing boards. That happens to be Melanie, so I just want to take this moment to thank her for filling that role for us this year. We really appreciate that. So Head Start started in this county back in 1978. We only had 30 seats at that time, and today it's grown to 121 seats. We service students who are three and four, and it's a county-wide program, so eight different school districts can pour into just the one Head Start program here in West Bend. Our three different locations, there's pictures there for you to see. We have the Jackson Community Center at the top, the Ralf's Education Center building is right there in the middle, and then we have the West Washington YMCA campus. The instructional components that we focus on in the Head Start program, a lot of early learning, those early development skills, literacy, mathematics, but a big emphasis on social skills, again, getting our students ready to learn and to transition to kindergarten. The program focuses on health and wellness as well, family engagement and education, and we have a co-taught model. Matt's going to speak a little bit about that and a little bit more in-depth when he speaks, but I just kind of wanted to highlight that we have a co-taught model for our dual-language learners as well. It's pretty unique that one in five of the students in the Head Start program this year speak a language other than English, and we have two co-taught sections for that. All right, the best part, the pictures. So I wanted to talk about our community partnerships with the Head Start program, and there's no better way to do that than to show you the cutest pictures of kids, right? So the top left, one of our students is having his teeth cleaned at school. That health and wellness piece is so important in our program, so we're very thankful that Bridging Brighter Smiles comes to our buildings two times a year to give students the cleanings that they need. The middle picture in the pool is a partnership with Kettle Marine YMCA. Those students are engaging in enrichment classes by taking swimming lessons. Because that's a really important thing to learn, right? At an, at an early age, water safety. The top right picture is our bookworms program. Every classroom has a bookworms reader come once a month. And the students get to take home that book and add it to their home library. The big picture in the middle, that's Cedar Community. That is our quilters and our knitters. They are a fabulous bunch of ladies. And the picture with the little one on the bottom left, she's wearing some of the mittens and the hat that. I gotta get this right, that the knitters did. Can't confuse them. And then the little boy on the right, he is wearing one of the quilts that the quilters made. And he uses it when he rests at school during, during naptime. The bottom right is Camp Silverbrook. So those students are just finishing up a field trip there. They stopped to pose for a picture. I think that might've been the day they did fishing, but I can't recall. So I could go on and on and list many more of the partners in our community that support the, the Head Start program, but I will turn it over to Matt.
Thank you again, West Bend School Board for having us. Thank you for Superintendent Wimmer for giving us the time. As Jamie said, we could talk about our program for a long time because we're very, very proud of it. But you're going to get lots of fast facts now about four K because that's my section. So what is four K? So four K was started in this school district during the twenty sixteen seventeen school year. We enroll around three hundred kids every year in our program for just four K. If you look at, this is that second part of what's under the early learning umbrella. If we look at all of the students in the program, there's four hundred and nineteen three and four-year-olds. So we're, we have a lot of kids in our program. Three hundred and twenty-one are connected to four K this school year. Our program is two hours and forty-five minutes in length, Monday through Thursday. That's called the point five model in the DPI terms. We, our calendar runs roughly Labor Day through Memorial Day. So it's about a hundred and thirty to a hundred and forty school days, kind of depending on how days fall. Part of the four K model is that we have to do eighty-seven and a half hours of parent outreach time, which sounds like a lot. Considering that the kids are only in front of us for two hours and forty-five minutes. And we have to do all these parent outreach hours. Sounds like a lot, but it's not when we have really good partners. So Kelly, I'll highlight you. So Kelly has the Glow Run and the Goog Gala coming up at Jackson Community Center. When we advertise those offerings, our families show up and that counts as those eighty-seven and a half hours of parent outreach. So it makes it really, really easy when we have good partnerships in the community. There's a couple of different program models that DPI allows. There's the community model, the traditional school model, and then kind of a blend of the two. We've chosen the community model and as I said, some of our partners are here tonight. So Kelly is here from the Jackson Community Center. And we have Melissa and Amy Hare representing our Y locations. We have several of those as you can see in the slide. Montessori and Living Word are other two locations. We chose the community model because it provides unique experiences. So if you look at those slides that Jamie just showed you, kids have opportunities to do things at the Y and at some of our other locations that they wouldn't ordinarily have in a traditional school setting. Probably the biggest thing for our families is convenient access to childcare. And that childcare provides less transitions for kids. So a lot of times that four K classroom happens to be right next door to that wraparound care. So they don't have to leave their site. They don't have to bus when they're right there in front of you. And then our partnerships. So we talked about, you know, some of the partnerships already. Some of the other neat things that we do with our partnerships, like Jackson Community Center, for example, they give us access to their site at no charge for professional development. So we run a lot of our professional development in that setting because we have a large staff and we don't have a traditional building. And then the Y does some neat things on behalf of our staff too. They provide memberships to all the staff that work there exclusively. So really good, true partnerships in the community. That's why we believe that is so important. So early childhood is going to be the third kind of piece under that early learning umbrella. Early childhood refers to students with disabilities. We currently have ninety-seven students with disabilities. About a third of those are educated in kind of more traditional special education settings. And the other two thirds are going to be blended out into Head Start classrooms, four K classrooms, things like that. You can see again, we have lots of course options. The only criteria for those course options is that they have to have really cute names because they're three and four. So as you can see, phonology is working on it a little bit, but the rest of them are really cute. In total, when we look at all of those programs under that early learning umbrella, we have thirty-four different classes that run. And we have so many different classes that run because we're always trying to match the kid and the family to the correct course offering. So on, on here, you know, this is sort of our traditional where we transition from like what our program is to our data. As you can see, we're going to go through the data part a little bit quicker because we spent a lot more time on, you know, what our program looks like. We're going to continue to have really high expectations for our kids. So we really want ninety percent of our kids achieving those developmental markers. And our site improvement plans, you know, say that and, and we believe it as a program. So this is our spring of twenty-three data. It's a tad bit blurry because we enlarged it, but the blue is below expectations, the purple is meeting. Again, these are developmental, what a three and a four-year-old should know. And then the teal is exceeding expectations. As you recall from the previous slide, we want all of those markers to be around ninety percent. So when you add that meets and exceeds together, we're going to be either just below that ninety percent threshold or just above in all of the categories. So again, we're setting rigorous yet attainable goals for our kiddos. This is how Jamie and I are doing and we're very pleased with our results. So when staff were surveyed, we highlighted three of them and we didn't cherry pick them. All of our results are very good. But these are three that we're particularly proud of. So one, the first one is I feel very satisfied with my job. We have ninety-seven point one percent of our staff indicating that yes, they are. And Jamie and I have really been working on like our authentic feedback to staff. We've been getting a lot of professional development through our leadership team. And that has helped us provide that feedback in a really meaningful way. So as you can see, a hundred percent of our staff actually said that, that our feedback was beneficial to them. So we're anticipating your questions and your question usually in these situations is how can we help, right? I'm sorry, I'm stealing your thunder, but so we are saying there's a few ways that you can help us. So first of all, you know, Dr. Trueblood and her team have really made a commitment to us. And really invested in early learning and we appreciate that. We really want our four-year-olds going on to five K as strong as possible. So we're really looking to make that strong curriculum connection to that team and, and they've already done that. We're going to continue to explore some nature-based learning opportunities. Jamie talked about Camp Silverbrook. It's, it's a gem and it's right in our backyard. And the, the picture where all the kids, so they're wearing oaky wear. It's a one-piece waterproof suit. So they can get really dirty, which they do. I know I've showed you pictures like that in the past already. That's at Camp Silverbrook. There's a lot of neat opportunities and it's very untapped. So we want to look into that. I mentioned earlier that our program is considered a point five. A point six is when you add a Friday. So by adding a Friday, we jump up from like one thirty, one forty days to like one fifty, one sixty days. And those parent outreach hours still stay the same. So adding a Friday is something that we want to continue to explore. We're looking for, you know, feedback from families to say that that's a need or something that they want as well. And then as you guys explore, you know, what's next for our school system? When you think about right sizing the district, think about that space for early learning, think about four hundred and nineteen three and four-year-olds. Think about those thirty-four classes that we have to run or thirty-four sections. But not only just what we need in that classroom and space, but also think about wrap care. So we're glad to have Melissa here tonight because Melissa's entire job at the Y, well, one of the many jobs she has at the Y. Is related to fielding those phone calls for, do you have room in childcare? And unfortunately, the answer is no sometimes. Because families continue to look for high-quality, affordable childcare. The Y can provide that, but they're often out of space. And then also we're really looking at peers. So we're looking at peers for models. And the reason that we do that is because we talked about co-teaching throughout this. That co-teaching model is where there's a special education teacher and a regular teacher teaching side by side. So that we can blend our typically developing peers with our students with disabilities. So when we bring those two together, we're offering the best service for kids, but we need more peers. So we're looking for more peer models in our threes. So with that, that kind of wraps up our time. Are there questions that you have other than can we help?
You did steal my thunder because I was going to ask that question, so now I have to move on to something else. No, no. Appreciate your presentation. Earlier on for the, for the Head Start program, you cited that it's grown over time. That started out in nineteen seventy-eight with thirty seats. Today it grew to a hundred and twenty-one seats. I'm just curious, when it's at a hundred and twenty-one, are we capped out at one twenty-one or is it, that's the number of people who have applied? I'm just curious if we kind of hit a ceiling or if we would have room?
Sure, that's a very good question. The grant allows for only the number of students that are in the grant to be in the program. So currently the grant is written for a hundred and twenty-one students. So we cannot take more than that. And we're full. I think I shared that with you guys last time I was here too. Historically, that it's been a challenge to fill those seats and, and for the first time in a while, our program is, is full. So maybe something that we think about for the future. I do know we have quite a few families on waitlist. Again, something we haven't had in years and years. So something to, to consider and think about.
And I appreciate that because I would imagine that if we, if we grow it, well, then we need, you know, more. We need, we need to make sure we have the infrastructure and people to support it. It's not just a matter of, well, let's just add, you know, ten or twenty or thirty more. We need to make sure that that whole system is in place, right?
Absolutely. Thank you.
What is the process for the waitlist? Is it a, is it first come, first served? Is it a drawing, a lottery? Is it scaled down need-based? Like what's the?
Yeah. So that's also a very good question. So it has to do kind of with our selection criteria. So if our program is full, during the intake process, you'll be asked a series of questions. And based on those questions, points are assigned to you. Being income eligible is one of the, the top questions there that gives you the most points as well. So it's, it's, it's assigned by points and whoever has the highest need based on their points would get the seat that opens up.
I see. Thank you. Other questions?
Maybe one comment and one question. I want to publicly thank our community partners. I've been a lot, a lot of those facilities. And it's great to see the involvement from our partners and thank you for that. Question comes on the same realm of yours, Chris, is like capacity. If I'm doing quick math, fuzzy math that sometimes I do, you got three hundred and twenty-one in one program and a hundred, you got four hundred and some. If I just take four-year-olds, right? So yours are three and four-year-olds. So how many four-year-olds are there in the district? How many four-year-olds aren't participating in the district? And again, I think it's pretty cool. Two thousand and sixteen is our first four K program. Seems like we have over fifty percent maybe participating, but we probably have another fifty percent that we could reach out to that might participate in the future. So kind of on the realm of, do you have goals that you want to hit? I mean, to help us plan for facilities, could it go to five, six hundred? And maybe a ancillary, are, are parochial schools offering four K or plan to offer four K? Because I would imagine some of the four K would go to there, but I actually don't know if they offer four K. So maybe a couple of comments on kind of planning for the future.
So yeah, a few questions there. So we typically believe that there's going to be around three hundred. As I said, that's kind of our average. This is a high year at three twenty-one. Remember that a lot of them are double counted, right? So that's why your fuzzy math probably doesn't work when you add them up on the slides. Because you can be a four K-er, but you can also be a Head Starter at the same time. You're just, you're, you're attending four K in the Head Start setting. So we do have, all of the four-year-olds are going to be that three twenty-one number this year. We actually look to our providers again to kind of give us a, a window to what that next year's enrollment is going to be. So they'll tell us, we are flooded with three-year-olds this year in childcare. And then we say, okay, so we're going to have a big four K in the following. So we, we use the childcare numbers to help predict what the future enrollment is going to be. And then to your question, parochial, yes, there is four K and three K in a lot of our parochial sites that are in and around West Bend and Jackson.
Just to that, what, what percent, based on the enrollment you see in five K versus how many are participating at the four K program? What percent of the incoming five K class would you say participates in four K?
I am going to guess very close to a hundred percent of those four-year-olds then go on to a five K classroom.
Right. I mean, what percent, so if there's five hundred people who start kindergarten, but only three, there's only three hundred in the four K. You know what I mean? Like what, what percent of our community is utilizing four K?
Yeah. That I don't know.
Because I, I'm just curious.
You'd have a, you'd have a couple of things. You're asking and we can follow up. Because it'll get around enrollment capacity, because one of the things we have to do is analyze declining birth rates for the state. And you're looking at the total overall population of our community, which slice we serve. And then when they start service with us, how many persist and continue? So we always look at, you know, as we graduate out larger enrollments, we're looking around, I think it's three hundred and sixty for an average class size. For graduating class, what percentage are we getting of that enrollment and how do we work with the numbers? So we can get you some data over time.
I was just curious what it was since we've been tracking.
I know that's one thing that they look at quite a bit is around, do families continue with us when they start with us?
And, and that, that is what I could speak to. So, you know, we do kind of track those families that attended four K. But then maybe have chosen something else for five K. So that we watch. You're asking a little bit of like the inverse.
Yeah, I just, just was asking for the. Over the, like, you know, in two thousand and nineteen, you, you can look at the, the previous data, you know, there was.
Sure.
Three hundred participants in two thousand and nineteen and then the following year there was four hundred five K-ers, you know? It was, I was just curious how that translates, that's all.
I think just maybe to generally recap, and I don't mean to speak for the other members. These programs just appear to be wildly successful. And so congratulations to the staff, to you, to others. Obviously, it's a team effort. Like you mentioned, Kurt, the community partners, big part of this. And I'm sure, I'm, I'm sure I'm forgetting people who are, who are involved in this process and I certainly don't mean to. And I've, I, I sense and certainly my questions, and I hope others, coming from the sense of when you have something that's wildly successful. Are we meeting the demand and what's our capacity? And that's really what we're looking, I, I believe what we're, what we're trying to get at. When you have something as wonderful as this, it's, well, what's the need in the community? Are we able to meet all of it? Certainly there are, you know, limitations, but I think we'd be interested in learning more about that at some point in the future. Superintendent Wimmer?
So they aren't going to brag on themselves, but I have no shame in that. So we were actually picked out by the state of Wisconsin for our federal program. They're convening communities of practice and best practice around the nation. And how do you collaborate and learn from each other? The state had an option to bring in multiple. The state had an option to bring in multiple representatives from multiple districts. Our state selected one district from the state to participate federally. So, we've just been in some initial conversations to determine, you know, would that work for us? Because we are really proud of what's going on here. It is effective. The team is amazing, and I think a model of collaboration, and of early learning around the state, and certainly being recognized to pull that into a national-level conversation. So, I'm really proud of the team. And they will tell you that takes everyone, not just here, but everyone in the classrooms in any position, whether you were picking the kids up to get them to school, which some days on a van is Matt, to being in the classroom, or helping them get a meal. So, thank you for that.
Very impressive. Thank you. Other questions? We appreciate your report very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next report, then, is our Curriculum Committee report, and our Curriculum Committee Chair, Melanie Ergot, will give us an update. Melanie?
All right. So, the Curriculum Committee met on October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. We had Ms. Haley Ransom and Ms. Melissa Worth presented a proposal to revise the current Honors pre-calculus course to an Advanced Placement pre-calculus course. The committee recommended bringing this proposal forward for the full board's approval or consideration. Also, Mrs. Deborah Proll, Ms. Micaiah Wolf, and Ms. Joanna Shreed, sorry if I butchered any names, presented a proposal to update two art courses and to add new art survey courses, hand-building, advanced hand-building, wheel throwing, and advanced wheel throwing courses. And the committee also recommended advancing this proposal for the full board's consideration. They are all here tonight to present their proposals. And then, we also reviewed and discussed the fifth-grade book club list, as we had heard in the public comment. Some comments included offering selections that were more lighthearted in content and appreciating content that allows students to be exposed to experiences that are different from their own. We had some question around the swear words, that they are not all universally defined. We acknowledge the additional workload of all the staff involved. And finally, for books brought forward, it would be helpful to understand the teachers' rationale behind why they chose certain books. Looking ahead, we are holding a special virtual meeting on October twenty-seventh at twelve fifteen to complete review of some of the second-quarter book lists. And the fifth-grade list will be revisited in consideration of comments from members of the public that we had received just a few minutes before our meeting started. And when we had our other special meeting, we just didn't have time to really filter through that. So, that is what we're looking ahead to.
Thank you. Any questions for Melanie? I send my appreciation to the committee for your work in moving through this process. We talked about this as an iterative process, and we're learning as we go, but thank you for your continued efforts there. We move, then, to the superintendent's report. Superintendent Wimmer?
Sure. This past weekend, two high school cross-country runners qualified for state championships. So, we had Chloe Miller, a freshman at East, Ethan Hackman, a sophomore at West. They're going to compete this coming Saturday in Wisconsin Rapids. The West Boys Soccer Team won their WIA Regional and will continue on tournament play on Thursday. They're going to be playing Pulaski High School right here in West Bend. So, show up, cheer them on. The game's at seven PM. In their first two tournament matches, this team has not given up a goal. So, they're a team to turn out and watch and cheer on. We also received recognition for our students, some current and former students. So, twenty-one current and former students of West Bend, East, and West, and Badger, scored among the top business students nationwide on rigorous exams for the High School of Business program. So, the students were tested in their knowledge on exams during last spring. And it's a National Accelerated Business Administration program of MBA research. It's used by our business and information technology classes. Students took exams after completing one of our classes, Leadership, Principles of Business, Business Economics, Principles of Finance, Principles of Marketing, Management, Business Strategies. So, congratulations, and again, thank you to those representing us on the national platform. And we have a few save the dates for our community. The annual West Bend Columns Milwaukee Symphony Orchestra Holiday Pops Concert will be on Tuesday, December fifth, at seven-thirty PM at our Silver Lining Arts Center. It's a large fundraiser that supports many scholarships for East and West students to use for any type of post-secondary education. It's also a great way to get into the holiday spirit. It's a fun concert. Tickets will go on sale November ninth, thirty dollars each. Watch our newsletters, as well as our website. But again, just save the date for right now. Last year, you'll recall, nearly one million dollars was awarded to our students from this organization. So, the dollars that they raise go right to supporting our students, so. Also, this Thursday is the Fall High School Orchestra Concert, also at the Silver Lining Arts Center at seven PM. And a thank you and a little shout-out to staff who volunteered their time this past weekend was the first doors-open West Bend event, supported by the chamber, the area chamber. And we had tours going on at McLean, Badger, and the high schools. And despite the rain, they were hopping all day. Our students from the Drum Line performed, got to kind of perform near downtown. That also opened, so it was kind of an exciting week. But we had a lot of shout-outs regarding the memories. I met a long-retired couple on one of the tours, and they had met in the halls of McLean. Andy Kasek laid out, they had a plethora of just leather-bound binders with clippings from the thirties on, just to see that school in action. And they got to see the history of our schools, some of our oldest schools, as well as kind of behind-the-scenes peek at things you don't normally see, some of the different mechanicals, how you really run that pool, all sorts of stuff. So, it was a great event. Speaking of our campuses, our facility work continues. So, we're doing a comprehensive facilities assessment, and that is just coming to kind of completion, their walkthroughs, getting some preliminary feedback, that kind of thing. So, recall that the core of our work are providing safe, secure, and accessible facilities for our students, staff, families, and public, making sure that they're welcoming, that they're well-maintained, and that they're operationally efficient is also important, and that we're able to adapt to evolving needs, whether it's different coursework, different areas of study for our students, shifting populations, making sure we have space for little ones, and some wraparound programs, things of that nature. So, with that in mind, EUA's been working. We brought in, we selected Findorf, and they're going to help with the cost estimating. So, both firms will be here on November thirteenth to just meet the board and go through what those reports will look like, not our data, but just getting you ready to engage in that conversation. And we have that targeted delivery date for December eleventh to really dig in on that. So, after that, we'll be looking at those preliminary cost estimates. And it's only then, after we receive all that, we look at the cost, only then do we start looking at engagement opportunities with, you know, student, staff, families, community, and that solution-finding thing. So, we're a little bit, I hear that all the time, like, oh, are you going to do this? And are we presenting that on December? Nope, we're just hearing and listening, and then we'll get to that next phase. So, I think everyone's always excited around, well, what do solutions look like for that? So, we don't want to skip ahead, so we're just foreshadowing the next couple board meetings, as well as future engagement strategies with everyone. That's the end of my report.
Can I add something there? Also, National Honor Society induction this last week. I was at the West one. I think it was one of their biggest inductive classes in a long time, almost eight, it was eighty people, I believe, for West. And I think East had a similarly large number as well, which I think is a pretty cool accomplishment for the schools.
Thanks for sharing that. Other questions for Superintendent Wimmer? Thank you for your report. We move on to discussion items. First discussion item is out-of-state travel for high school choir. I believe Molly Hanks, I see you're right there, East Athletic and Activities Director, is going to come to the podium and walk us through this item.
Good evening. I have my co-curricular hat on this evening. I am here on behalf of Tess Bright. She is our choir teacher. However, tonight happens to be our first high school choir concert. So, I told her I would pinch-hit, and I'll do the best I can to explain the purpose of our choir trip that they would like to take. I did ask her to write up something that I could read from her perspective as to what, you know, the purpose and value of this trip would be, so I'm just going to do that quickly. "The proposed trip to Nashville for current choir members is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for many of our students. They will have the chance to perform in venues and for audiences that they might never again be able to. They will learn about the journey musicians take to become successful as they tour the Grand Old Opry, the evolution of music at the only national African-American music history museum in the world, and the music recording industry in process as they tour and record their voices at RCA Studio B. These activities will stay with our kids for the rest of their lives. When I was a high school junior, I went with choir students to St. Louis, and as a senior, to New York. It was through these experiences that I made the decision to become a music teacher, and I would not hold my current position if I had, if I didn't have these experiences." Many current choir students have aspirations to pursue music in a multitude of ways after high school. Through this trip, they will be able to learn about career opportunities and what it takes to become a professional musician. The trip is open to any current choir students and their parents or guardians. Students are currently working on a SNAP fundraiser, through which a couple of students have already raised half of their trip tuition. Students also have the opportunity to sell food and cooking items through Pam's pantry. Students are also able to participate in the holiday singing group, for which the program will receive donations to go toward this trip. And the choir parent group continues to brainstorm ways for students to pay for their trip. So, they are in the early stages of fundraising, firstly, but the trip, as you can see in her organization, she's done a really good job of working with this MCI tour company to prepare what I think is a really cool experience for our choir students.
Thank you. Any questions? Seems the first blush to be pretty straightforward, so I appreciate you bringing this up. So, this is a discussion item?
Yes.
So, we'll have it on the next agenda for action.
Awesome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We move, then, to High School Honors Pre-Calculus to Advanced Placement Pre-Calculus. All right. Thank you. And if you'd introduce yourselves, that would be excellent.
Hi, I'm Haley Ransom. I've been a teacher in the district for twelve years and nine years teaching Honors Pre-Calculus.
Melissa Worth, this is my eleventh year in the district, my nineteenth year teaching overall. And I've taught Honors Pre-Calculus. This is my second consecutive year. I taught it when I first came to the district for several years, and taught it at my prior district as well.
What we're asking is that our course be retitled from what it is now, Honors Pre-Calculus, into an AP Pre-Calculus. There's a lot of benefits. AP Pre-Calc is first coming out of College Board this year. So, this spring will be the first-ever AP Pre-Calculus test offering nationwide. So, it is a new AP course. We did not adopt it this year, because it's brand-new, and we didn't have everything well-planned out.
At this point last year, there was this much information available from College Board. They said, "AP Pre-Calc is coming. We can't tell you what's going to involve." And we didn't want to jump on the bandwagon, not knowing what that meant, coming to the board in October of last year. We could have said, "Well, it's a class."
Yeah.
We didn't know what it is.
We didn't know much.
Rather than do that, we chose to wait a year. Students can take the test without being enrolled in the AP course, even with our Honors Pre-Calc course. So, we felt that if it was a good choice for our students, they could choose to take the test if they wanted to, but we were going to make sure we did our due diligence before we made any adjustments to our high school course catalog.
Yeah, and we have sent two teachers last summer to the AP training, so that our students this year should have all of the necessary skills. We already have both had students asking to sign up. So, we know that there's a want for it amongst our students quite a bit. They can earn college credit from passing this AP test. And we know UW-Madison has already said, if they get a three, they get this course worth it. If they get a four or a five, they get Math 114. If UW-Madison has posted, there's now a list out there of what every college will give you for this AP Pre-Calc test. So, college credits can be earned, as long as they get a three or above.
One of the benefits of the AP on the student transcript is that it's pretty much universal notation that's recognized across the country. When a college looks at a student's transcript and they see AP, they know what that means. There is a set-out course description. These are the things that need to be covered. This is what you need to agree to. And the teachers and school have submitted a syllabus, saying this is what we will cover. Versus our Honors, which is, our Honors Pre-Calc could look very different than even Honors Pre-Calc at Germantown, Urslinger, or Hartford. It's, the school has their own Honors Pre-Calc curriculum, because Pre-Calculus is beyond the math, state math standards. State math standards go pretty much through advanced algebra, and what we cover is beyond that. It's an elective course for students that want to take advanced math. So, but it does not affect the Honors diploma, because whether they take an AP course or an Honors course, it counts towards the student's Honors diploma, the same.
The curriculum adjustment from what we have done the last nine years that I've taught the course into it becoming AP is just slight. There's a little bit depth change. The CED that AP gives us, we cross-list. We figured out that there's some topics we got to dive just a hair deeper, and some that they maybe brush over quicker, or are considered optional, which would be the topics that we cover in May and start June after the AP test would be given. So, for us, content-wise, it was not a huge difference at all. But what we really want out of AP is that the teacher and student resources could grow. Right now, because we are not labeled AP, we do not have AP classrooms set up for our students. And that is really where we get a lot of teacher materials, so that we can best present the topics to our students. It's also where students can get some more practice on their own of the types of questioning and the phrasing and verbiage that the AP test will be. So, changing it from Honors into AP, content-wise, and those essential questions, won't change. Very little glitches here and there that we're already putting into practice, but it should give us access to a lot more material, and our students can be better prepared, because we're better prepared.
So, the course in this enrollment in this class has been very varied, from as high as nine percent of the overall student population to around five and a half percent of the overall student population. However, the group of students that we think we can capture by changing to AP is those seniors taking a fourth-year math. They may not have looked at, okay, well, I could take AP Statistics right after, after Advanced Algebra to get that AP credit, or I could take FST, which is another course that we offer. But we think that we can capture some of those students by saying, hey, you can get your one hundred level math credit taken care of at most colleges. Because as I glanced through the list, most colleges were offering this as their one-hundred level math credit if students earned a four or a five. Some schools, it was a three, a four, or a five. So, it gives those students opportunities to get a jumpstart on some of those general education requirements, and some things that they're going to have to take when they get to college. So, we have, we've, from the feedback we've gotten from students, we feel like the number would increase because of that opportunity for students.
It gives them chance at college credits. I don't see this would ever lower, because they don't have to take the AP test. They can still just take the course like they have been. But for the seniors and some people who want the college credit, I would only foresee our numbers going up there. Budget-wise, without going too in-depth about this, our textbook that we're currently using is dated two thousand and seven. We have been in need of a new resource for a while. It is just a hardcover, heavy textbook. There's no online resources. There's no online access. The students have to carry and lug it around. So, we have been up for a new resource for a while. We put it on hold, because we heard a rumor that AP Pre-Calc was coming, and we didn't want to get a new resource that didn't align to their outline. So, we put it on hold. We wanted to hear, like, what is AP? What resources are going to be made that align with it better? So, when you see the cost of the textbook, that is something that we have deferred. And we need a new resource anyway. We need online access. We need better materials to present to our kids. I think we did a really good job of holding off on that payment, so that the district could use the money appropriately when this AP course came down the line, and we could find the best resources for it.
We were actually pretty far into the process. We had been reviewing materials. We had them all in-house, and then this kind of was like, oh, in about next year, we think there's going to be AP Pre-Calc. We're like, okay, let's pause. It's not responsible of us to spend money that, that isn't, you know, in the right places, necessarily.
So, yeah, that overdue new resource is a cost that's there. I think that cost is there, even if we don't get to rename the course. And the other thing is the teacher training. Just like any teacher who's new to an AP course, they have summer training that would need to be done. We sent two teachers last year to get some insight on what the course was going to look like, and just on what the course was going to look like and just kind of hear the initial. I would need to go this summer, which I'm kind of glad that we split up because after the course running a year, everybody's got some more, like, stuff to talk about at this training. They'll be more fine-tuned, so it's good that someone got their foot in the door. And then, like, I'll be training this summer to follow that up. So those are the main costs that we have. Again, I don't think it's out of the realm of other APs when you're talking about training once a year. Are there questions you have for us?
Thank you for your presentation. Questions? Chad?
Yeah. Other than the cost, which, I mean, like you said, you're going to need a resource anyway, a new resource, do you see any down, is there any negative impact or downside to offering this?
So I attended the training this summer, and the community around it is really wrapping around that this is a course for any student that is planning on attending college. They're really pushing that any student that has gone through advanced algebra can take Precalc, AP Precalc, and earn that college credit, which I think is, sometimes the honors, we don't offer an honors math class until honors Precalc, and it's kind of a little scary for some of the students. They're like, oh, honors. And we're like, it's not that different, guys. You've been doing math your whole life. It's just the next step if you want to advance in those math and science careers, but really pushing that. I haven't heard any downside. The biggest downside right now is it's brand-new. No one knows exactly what the test is going to look like or exactly what the questions are. So as this test develops, we might see slight adjustments, but...
And like I said, it being the same content, whether they take it as an AP title or honors title, that clientele shouldn't change. If anything, I foresee it improving. We currently offer something called FST, which is an abbreviation, but it's what a lot of our seniors take so that they're taking a fourth year of math. Now, if those students want to get their college algebra done, that's what AP Precalc provides. So they can take a year-long course and not have to pay for the credits at a college. They just have to pay for the one test.
Is there, so if we currently are offering an Honors Precalc, is there also a regular, a standard Precalc? So it's just Precalc?
FST is what we call, so we have Precalc, which is an honors course, and then Functions, Stats, and Trig, which is basically Precalc light, but it's renamed different.
And do we also offer a AP Stats class?
We do. We have AP Calculus AB, which is first-year calc. We have AP Calc BC, which is second-year calc. This year, the numbers are too low to run that course at the high school, and then we have AP Statistics. So this would be kind of like the fourth AP offering out of math. But again, like I said, BC doesn't run every year depending on the need.
So the AP Stats class would satisfy the sub-100 categories?
It's actually different. Most colleges run a stats class out of a different department than they run their math classes out of.
Sure, because it's math for non-mathematicians.
Well, actually, it's math for pretty much everybody. So almost every college degree requires some, I taught AP Stats. I'm very passionate about AP Stats as well. Sorry. So almost every degree requirement at a college level has some sort of stats requirement. AP Stats can fulfill any, so like, business department's like, oh, you have to take our business stats. AP Stats covers that. Psychology department's like, you have to take our psychology stats. AP Stats covers that. So it's like, it's completely different. Students that take AP Stats are like, I thought I was signing up for a math class. This seems like a writing class. Yes, yes, it is.
And we do currently have students that are doubled up in Honors Precalc and AP Stats or AP Calc and AP Stats. So there is double up. Stats is kind of the elective. It's off the path.
Yeah, no, I think AP offerings are a wonderful thing, so I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
Kurt?
I just want to vocal my support of this. I have two kids that went through a lot of the high-level math classes, and I think our teachers are outstanding. Both my students and both my kids love the teachers, and it really brought a passion to them in math, and they did get college credit, which helps them save money and sometimes be a junior where the people of your same age are sophomores. So they get extra, just status of getting better courses and doing things they want to do anyway. Back to the topic. I'm in favor of it, and thank you for your passion.
Thank you.
So I'm trying to bring up my passion to match yours, so, thank you.
We appreciate that not everyone is as passionate about math as we are.
Well, look, the idea of being able to expand access to college credit is incredibly compelling, and so I too am in favor of this. Obviously, we need to take action on this next time. I, again, just to echo what Kurt said, just applaud all the efforts. I studied accounting, and I remember going in saying, boy, you know, I had a really solid math background at high school too, and it really helped. And so I think anyone going into sciences or engineering, I mean, there are many, many applications. And so anything we can do to allow our kids to get ahead, very much appreciated.
We actually sent a graphic the day after we presented to the curriculum committee from Curtis Markhor about the, and I can't, I don't know the numbers, but it's significantly higher likely chance of a student obtaining a bachelorette degree if they've taken Precalculus in high school. I don't have the numbers, but he sent it to us the next day. I was like, oh, that's awesome. Thanks. And it's in my email somewhere. I forgot what the numbers were.
Other questions, thoughts? This is a discussion item, so we'll bring it back for action next time. We appreciate you coming tonight. Thank you very much. And thank you for all your great work in the classroom and beyond. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Art Department, course updates and new course proposals. And also, if you could introduce yourselves, that would be great. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you. Switch to that one right away. Well, thank you for bringing us back to share our vision with the whole school board. We are the Westbend High School's art team, and I am Deb Prawl. I have been in art education for 26 years. This is my 26th year, all but three here at the Westbend School District. I've taught at all the levels. This is my 16th year at the high school, though.
I'm Johanna Shred. This is my first year at Westbend High School. I have five years of teaching experience, all the way from 4K up until 12th grade, and I have roughly 15 to 20 years' experience in other art careers such as corporate interiors and animating for Disney. Oh, this year I teach Intro to Art and Drawing and Painting, so.
Makaya Wolf, or Kaia. I've been teaching in the district for 26 years, or 24 years. She's 26. I've been in all the different buildings as well. This is my second full-time year at the high school. Otherwise, I'm usually jumping back and forth and filling everywhere I can. I am the ceramics teacher now, teaching ceramics and advanced ceramics.
So to begin, we'd like to start showing you a few of the art events and displays our student artists have participated in, both in school and in the community. We'd also like to say thank you. We have seen many of you at our events and truly appreciate your support.
One of those great supports is our K-12 Art Show at The Hub, which has been a wonderful partnership since we found an interior place that can really welcome all of the community at any time of the day. The ribbons are presented by community members and our administration and a wonderful Mrs. Wimmer.
We've collaborated with our community library to create a teen display of art the last two years, and the Museum of Wisconsin Art has a jury teen art show for area high schools to participate in. The top three photos are from the AP Art and Design Art Show. After the AP artists submit their portfolios, they plan and organize their own show in the silver lining gallery space with an artist's reception. We'll be sure to let you know when that date is for this coming year.
The bottom two slides are for the autism awareness for soup night. Ceramics, last year was my first year participating, and it was so thrilling to provide 240 bowls and 150 spoons for this event to help them raise money.
The advanced painting and AP students design and paint banners for the Westbend Downtown Association Art Walk Banner Project. The high school has been a part of this since its beginning 11 years ago. We also participate in the UW-Washington County Festival of Arts. And lastly, our student artists have been a part of special curricular collaborations, specifically the Holocaust Art Shows, where the art, social studies, English, family and consumer science, and music departments work together to create the event. Before making our recommendations, we want to begin with the current art course paths. And some points to notice are that all our semester courses except for the AP courses. Students may stay on one art track or cross between the 2D, jewelry, and ceramic paths. There are three introductory courses, one intermediate course, and four advanced courses and two AP. This model has been used for 10 years, and we recognize gaps scaffolding from introductory to advanced courses. Thank you. To update our department to meet the demands or the needs of our students, we recommend adding four semesters of art survey with different curriculums on a two-year cycle, renaming Intro to Art as Art 1, renaming Drawing and Painting as Art 2, and restructuring the ceramics and sculpture path, adding intermediate options and modifying the advanced-level course by splitting it into two advanced courses.
These are our proposed art course offerings. Oh, good. 17 total. So as you can see, we have the four art survey courses, each with a different curriculum focus, Art, Nature, Identity, Community, and Culture. Art Survey is an exploratory-level art course that can be supplementing for gaps for students who have either not had arts since sixth grade or are new to the district or need more experience before entering Art 1. Art 1, formerly Intro to Art, will remain the same. This is already meant to be taken following eighth-grade art and is a prerequisite for Art 2, formerly Drawing and Painting. Students can either, they can enter the art pathway via Art 1 to advance classes upon portfolio review from eighth-grade art. So there are two specific goals in making these changes. One is giving students the opportunity to stay at the exploratory level without the need to advance to capstone and AP-level courses and to bridge the gap between entry-level skills and advanced skills in ceramics.
So our department mission is to empower students to independently and creatively think, problem-solve, and communicate visually. That all begins with a strong base and a true survey course that teaches a broad range of disciplines. Offering an intentional series of courses designed to create a strong base will provide depth, skills, and enrichment to their learning and support skills in other courses. The current intro class is designed as a traditional skills-based course that is intimidating to many students who are looking for more enrichment and enjoyment as opposed to a skills-based course. Assessments in the survey course will include skills, but the emphasis will be based on process, experimentation, and reflection.
So the new recommendations meet the needs for two different pathways. Vertically, students can stay within the survey and introductory-level courses, or horizontally, they can progress through more advanced courses leading to AP Art and Design. So not only does this give students the option to take art classes without the pressure to advance towards AP, it also touches on other art courses offered in the art department, surveying classes such as jewelry and art metals, ceramics, sculpture, and printing.
Here's the current ceramic and sculpture pathway. You can see that students would take the ceramics and sculpture for a semester and then jump right into advanced ceramics and sculpture and then on to AP. This pathway is missing its crucial intermediate level. Here is the proposal for ceramics and sculpture pathway, adding two intermediate courses, hand-building and wheel-throwing, splitting the advanced ceramics and sculpture into two advanced courses, advanced hand-building and advanced wheelwork. This will allow students to follow their chosen interests. After teaching ceramics classes for years, you definitely can tell which kid likes to go more hand-building and which one wants to be on the wheel, and then you can't get them off the wheel. The new course pathway also allows the students to stay in ceramics for more classes. When they finish a certain pathway, they can go back and start another one or advance on to AP Art and Design.
In September, we surveyed students in our current classes to get a snapshot of what are classes they have taken or are enrolled in for this year. A large number of students taking the introductory-level courses, or there are a large number of them. We typically run around five to seven intro classes a year. Our prediction is we would see that split between the survey classes and Intro to Art renamed Art 1. And then in this slide, we had asked students what other art classes they might be planning on taking yet. And the positive feedback is that many of the students are planning on taking more art classes, and we feel we can sustain the level we're at.
The following slides demonstrate our proposed budget with these new course offerings. Art Survey courses each run one semester on a four-course rotation, meaning that two art survey courses will be offered per year, each with their own curriculum and specific supplies. The first semester course includes the budget for shared supplies by both courses offered. Therefore, Art Survey Identity has a higher initial cost than Art Survey Nature, and the ongoing costs cover supplies specific to the Art Survey Identity curriculum. The initial cost for Art Survey Nature is lower since it includes only the specific items for that curriculum. And then our capital objects is covered in Identity, and it carries over to Nature, Community, and Culture. Capital objects would be resupplied on a two-year rotation. Just like the previous slide, this represents one year with two Art Survey course offerings. So the initial cost for Art Survey Community includes supplies shared by both courses, and each course has an ongoing cost specific to its individual curriculum.
The next two slides will cover the ceramics. This would be hand-building. Advanced hand-building, and the capital objects will cover the shared course requirements or funding that would be shared throughout all the levels. Wheel-throwing, and then advanced wheel-throwing where the capital is shared too across the other courses as well.
So to recap, the new model provides more opportunities for all types of students to take art classes for enrichment and deepen their art studies, if they wish, with six entry-level courses when you include jewelry and art metals and ceramics and sculpture. This will also provide the necessary intermediate steps in the ceramics curriculum we're missing now. At this time, we can sustain changes working with our current teaching schedule and space. There will be a shift in the way students move through the courses, and we'll see a change in the number of sections we have for Art 1 and Ceramics and Sculpture, not necessarily a change in the total number of classes we run as a department. So a few key takeaways from the 205 responses that we received in September is that art classes are often taken as a stress-relieving break in the day for students, the need for more classes to accommodate students and the specific tracks they would like to be on, and that students value art classes and the skills they learn. And as they continue, we had many comments about more ceramics classes. And lastly, we had some highlighted quotes such as "a much-needed mental health break", "making new friends", "helping them present who they are", and one student who didn't intend to continue with art classes now has a small business, and she goes to conventions selling her fan art and illustrations. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate you presenting and the passion with which you present. Applause first of all to see any questions. Chad?
Yeah, I do. Thank you again for presenting. I just want to say that I really like the new design for the vertical art survey continuation where people can continue to engage in art without feeling like their skillset has to continue to improve because I think part of it is the process, not just, you know, how great your drawing is. But, so I think that's a great option. I think adding additional classes and options, if we have the capacity and budgetary-wise, I think it's a great option. I like more pathways into the AP Art and Design as well. One question I had about the AP Art and Design, is that a strictly linear pathway? Or could someone have not taken all of the preceding art classes and still be able to take AP Art and Design?
Correct. You do not have to take all of them. We encourage students to take as many as they possibly can because in so many of the different courses, we do teach new skills, and they have opportunities to try new mediums. And at the AP level, new skills aren't necessarily taught because it's a very independent, concept-heavy course.
Well, and one of the reasons I ask is because, I mean, the class list that you have here going across over to, leading to AP Art and Design, certainly very appropriate, and I'm sure skill-building all the way up until that class. But obviously, I think the AP Art and Design also includes other medium that you don't... Design also includes other medium that you don't have listed here, like digital photography and, you know, like seamstress, things like that. I mean, there are other pathways that can lead to the AP Art and Design because that's encompassing more than just the 2D and 3D art that they have listed.
Absolutely. And we do see some crossover coming from some of the tech ed classes where the digital media is when they start overlapping into the AP course.
Yeah, and again, just from the last presentation as well, I mean, the AP class offering there again, getting more students to be able to participate in that is another opportunity for them to save time and money as they get into college because this, almost every college has some art requirement, and the AP requirement being able to be met this way if they choose to is a wonderful option.
Absolutely. There are many majors that are requiring an art requirement now.
So I do like your new flow here.
Melanie, I think in the Curriculum Committee report, you had received this, and I didn't hear that there were significant concerns, and your recommendation was for the board to consider it?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. I know I had said that I always loved art when I was in school too, and I think it's great to have some more, you know, class opportunities for people, and I don't think any of us saw any problems with moving forward or recommending it.
I'm just curious, the Art Survey, Nature, Identity, Community, Culture. So the individuals who were up here before were talking about math. I loved math with art. I was very, and am very unskilled at art. So that would have been intimidating for me to take a class where, okay, I'm making this up, your final exam is some sort of painting, that would have been very intimidating. Tell me a little bit how these surveys would be, I think you would describe it perhaps less intimidating to someone like me back then. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Perfect.
Oh, boy. I don't know.
Because they are thematic and a little bit more conceptual and allow students to examine those themes and where they fit in with those themes. And while we have skills we will be teaching and touching on, so much of it would be process-based and learning about it.
Great.
Does that answer?
It answers it directly. Thank you. Appreciate that. June?
I appreciate how you realized that there was a gap. You were listening to the students. Who else would know better than the teachers who are, you know, interacting with them daily? Clearly, the beginner class to the advanced can be quite intimidating, and so seeing that gap and taking the time to put this, to think up solutions and present it, I really appreciate that. And so your work will help all the students, so thank you.
Other questions?
I just want to...
Kurt?
I'm in favor of this real quick. Fifteen course offerings for high school, that's amazing. I would like to take one of the classes.
She'll send home a project for you.
Seventeen? Fantastic. Sorry, you may have addressed this earlier. Is there an art requirement that every student coming through the system has to take in art class?
There is a half-credit requirement, but it doesn't just pertain to the visual arts. It includes any art, any tech ed, any business, so it's a rather wide net.
It can be fulfilled in multiple ways. I'm just looking at the statistics. There was an interesting statistic on how many high school students took ceramics and sculpture. And I thought that was very impressive.
Well, the students I talked to last year when I started really digging into this whole proposal, they were more upset that they wouldn't get to participate in it, but they were really happy that, I'm like, okay, so then what should we do? And they were really, really involved, but they're all graduated now, so.
So again, this is a discussion item, so we'll bring this up on the next agenda as an action item. We sure appreciate your presentation. Thank you. Thank you for coming. All right, that was, I believe, our final discussion item, so now we move on to action items. So Superintendent Wimmer, I'm going to tick through at least the first couple of these and ask for the first one. Out-of-state travel west wrestling. Are there any deviations or changes or amendments from what we heard last time when we discussed this item?
No changes.
No changes. Are there questions from board members with regard to the proposal for out-of-state travel west wrestling? Hearing none, I would move to approve the out-of-state travel for the west wrestling team as presented. Is there a second? Thank you, Chad. Motion and second to approve the out-of-state travel. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Are there any opposed? Thank you. That motion carries. Then also Superintendent Wimmer, the Career and Technical Education or CTE work-based learning course changes. Any updates to that item compared to what we had heard last time?
No.
Thank you. Any questions from the board on that item? Hearing none, I would move to approve the Career and Technical Education or CTE work-based learning course changes as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, John. Motion and second to approve the Career and Technical Education work-based learning course changes as presented. That's a bit of a tongue twister. I hope I got that right. Final discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That motion carries. Next, we move to the final budget recommendation and certification of tax levy. So I believe we're going to invite forward Mr. Andy Sarno, our Assistant Superintendent of Business and Operations, to walk us through this action item. Good evening.
Good evening. It's one of my favorite nights of the year. Culmination of a lot of the work that's taken place since last November when we calculated the initial estimates, engaged stakeholders, so have some final information. Have our, the Department of Revenue, the Department of Public Instruction has their final information available to us. So have a brief presentation tonight, and really, two weeks ago, we discussed some of the formulas that go into the final calculations. I don't want to embarrass a board member who made a nice suggestion unless she wants to be acknowledged, but created just a little bit of a three-year financial information. The two prior years, what were the estimates in September and now with the final information? So June, if you'd like to be acknowledged.
Thank you, June.
But it really does flow, you know, where we calculate the final revenue limit authority, which tonight we have a balanced budget, taxing to the maximum allowable authority does not include that, a lot of that information, but where our money comes from, the different components, even breaking out $5 million for the vouchers and that final mill rate calculation. So I will close that unless there's any questions on that document, but just wanted to put it out there because it's posted in board docs, wanting to make sure that we disclose a lot of this information and make sure it's available to everybody. Okay to do that? Otherwise, I'm going to have to ask Tim Harder to come back up and share some additional information. Had as well, and we can go over this, and I want to make sure that I'm in the right one here, but have the final budget available to us as well that breaks it out by fund, has two years ago, last year, unaudited, meaning that is not finalized at this point in time, as well the proposed document. We can go over that a little bit. But just briefly, and this is a document that I create, I update it every year and make sure that we reflect final information. So really, three points of information that we're going to have. Number one, where were we at in September? Where are we now? Second thing, showing those variances, what, based on the estimates that we had, and then the third piece, the important part, is making that motion, all-in-one motion. What's the levy and the dollar amount resulting in a mill rate, which is the percentage? And then just disclosing that we are approving that final budget this evening as well that incorporates all of the final information, working with the Human Resources Department and pulling all of that staffing, working with the department heads with their budgets as well as all the schools with the dollars that are allocated to them.
So just to clarify, this is a tax reduction.
It is a tax reduction, so we, yep.
Just want to clarify.
Well, it's from the September estimate, there's a slight increase.
Right, seven cents, I see that. But I mean, from last year, it's a significant tax reduction.
It's a significant reduction, yep. And we'd been estimating that whole time. I didn't want to overpromise, but it is a reduction from last year's.
How was it a reduction?
I'm sorry?
How was it a reduction? Just the mill rate?
The actual levy is decreasing, so the dollar amount in and of itself is decreasing as well as the mill rate.
Because our debt is lower debt.
Correct. Exactly.
But technically, with the mill rate and the increase of property values, we're still getting charged basically the same or more. I mean, I calculated out mine. I'm going to be paying more towards the school portion than last year, so I would say it's not quite a tax deduction, you know?
Yeah, so I can see it both ways, but the total amount that we're asking for the community is lower this year than last, but it could land differently, I mean, to Mr. Donaldson's point, it could land differently on different people depending on property assessments and such, but the overall ask has gone down.
And I state this in this particular way, you'll notice in the recommended motion, on average, across all parcels. So I know that the city had a reassessment this year. Two weeks ago, I learned that the Village of Jackson is going to be reassessing this next year. That can certainly have an impact on what portion of the actual levy, the dollar amount, is a municipality responsible for, what happened with those values. And so at the annual meeting, I spoke to a gentleman, he said, "I think my property taxes are going to go up." And I said, "Well, you're probably one of those rare situations where something happened." Yep, we put on a big grudge. But that is to say with the reassessments of the city.
Yeah, and don't get me wrong, I'm not blaming you. I think, you know, what you have put together and what you guys have budgeted, you know, what we've budgeted for and stuff and made changes is, you know, the fiscally responsible thing for the community, and I think some people are going to have less, some people are going to have more, but it is what it is.
No, and it's a very good point because there could be people, again, who open up and say, "I don't know, it didn't go down." But that could, in theory, be true any year where there's a reassessment.
Absolutely.
Yeah, good point, John, by the way, because I don't, I'm in the town of West Bend, so my reassessment was different, you know? So you're correct.
Mine as well.
The city got me good.
Yep. Different meeting, different meeting.
The property values, again, that's that denominator when calculating the mill rate, but it went down slightly from our estimates, negligible. It impacted literally those couple of million dollars. It was literally two thousandths of a cent, and when I even calculate, our actual levy is 5.19504. I rounded up by almost half of a penny, just because we have to round it at some point. That's not how it carries forward to the municipalities, but that in and of itself, the rounding is even more than the property value estimate that we received back in July from RW Baird. Membership, interestingly enough, where it did decrease from last year, the actual, from September, decreased a little bit less. Coincidentally, though, because of the declining enrollment exemptions that we receive, there was no change. It was virtually uninterrupted with our revenue limit. It does help us out next year. The declining enrollment exemption went down by $242,000, which makes 2024, '25 that much better for us. So helps the bottom line next year, even though we didn't receive any additional funds because of that in the current year. Little bit of additional information, we estimated just under $5 million for the vouchers. I estimated based on the increases per student as well as more students entering into that as they get into kindergarten and go through the grades. The final was a little bit over $4.8 million. It's, again, very neutral impact on the mill rate. It's even less than the rounding error, but it's important to know that this is 63 cents on the mill rate, so one and eight dollars of our levy, the overall levy, goes towards vouchers of students and families that qualify for those private schools, for the schools that participate in this program.
I have a question there. And I'm in favor of this. I don't mean to, I always ask questions. Six years ago, it was under a million. So if I'm doing all my memory right, it's increased about a million a couple of years, and now it's at 4.9. It's a significant portion that goes to support, I think, again, needy families that are going to parochial schools, so. But it is a big number now.
Yeah, it's not that old of a program, so as each year that passes, there's more kindergartners that qualify for that, so they're still going through. We don't have any of the family's information. We don't know who these students are. They're all reported directly from the private schools. Again, those that qualify or participate directly to the Department of Public Instruction, they have their own pupil count, just like we have ours in September, and so all of that information goes directly to the DPI. But, so we don't know who they are and what grade levels they are, but we do receive the dollar amount in the middle of October.
Melanie?
I just wanted to ask, is that the same thing as like the parental choice?
Correct.
Program, okay.
There's two dollar amounts in the revenue limit that go into that variable. And as well, I included this last year, and it's just another celebration that we have, but debt. So last year was the remaining debt levy that we had, and so at this point in time, we're not anticipating needing any dollars. It's possible, based on the interest rate return that we're receiving for the dollars that are sitting there earning interest, we may actually have a little bit too much. So we will have to cross that path when we get to it because of that return that we're getting. But debt-free at this point in time, no debt levy on the current year's levy. State aid, this is one, we saw a $462,000 decrease, full disclosure, over the weekend, I had a dollar amount that was carried over from last year, so I made sure that that $462,000 was updated for this presentation. But the primary reason is because there was, I mean, when we think about how, all of this is based on school districts and how they spent last year, and if there's positively aided districts that underspent versus overspent, or even negatively aided districts that over and underspent, and Brian Brewer from RW Baird was here last week, we went over this information, made sure that we're game planning, looking ahead in the future, but there's a couple of large districts, again, positive and negative aided districts, that ended up getting more money. There's actually even an error, I think it was Racine, that their aid was calculated incorrectly in July, but it impacts our actuals right now based on how districts spent last year. And so that adversely impacted our district, and so $462,000 less than that July 1 estimate that we received from the Department of Public Instruction. So the variance in that is because, again, revenue limit equals state aid minus property taxes, it does push that off to the taxes. So that's when we take a look at the original estimate of the mill rate back in September of 513, we're now at 520, 519.0504. I've rounded up to 520, but that's one of the contributing variables, though. Very minimal impacts elsewhere, but the state aid did decrease. That's supposed to be a negative, I apologize, I'm going to highlight that. That's supposed to be a negative $462,000.
Chad?
That's one of the things I was just going to say, but also, so just to be clear, you said that the voucher program is affecting the mill rate 63 cents? So 12% of our voucher, or 12% of our mill rate is secondary to voucher program?
Correct.
And that's not listed separately on the tax bill, so when people see that their school district taxes are X, it's not completely that. 12% of that is supporting voucher and private programs.
Final mill rate, $5.20, up slightly again because of that state aid portion that did decrease. Originally, dating back to spring, the ESER, so we have the ESER 2 that wrapped up on September 30th. ESER 3 actually goes through next September, but we estimated that we'd need $3.98 million of those funds to balance the budget, and we are using $3.98 million to balance the budget. There's some rounding change, plus and minus, but we're right at that target. That still leaves, and I'll show that in just a second, but it still leaves a few of those dollars to be able to have access to them from July 1st to September 30th of next year, assuming that when we wrap up this fiscal year, we don't go in the red and need to claim a little bit more of that. So we're going to continue to monitor that. As was shared, we have a balanced budget that's in front of us at this point in time. Some of the 2024, because that's right on the horizon, in fact, we're looking at at least a three and a half, I've even seen estimates that are cresting over 4% now, that translates to what we'd be negotiating with our Teachers Association, looking at staff, but primarily due to inflation. It's starting to get under control. This year, we were in excess of 8%, right at 8%, but the interest rates from the Federal Reserve have curbed that inflation. It slowed it, but looking at, again, at least 3.5%, we're monitoring that closely. As mentioned, 800, or excuse me, almost $1 million of ESER 3 dollars available next year, again, dependent on what we need this year without going in the red when we cross the path from June 30th to July 1st. As was shared, the declining enrollment exemption, we monitored that, that helps us out a little bit more, but it still exists, about $891,000 from this year to next year that we have this year that's going away, so we'll make sure that... So we'll make sure that those revenue limit projections for next year, as a part of the November estimates, we'll start to use that. The beauty of that is that we have, we're in year two of the final budget, so we know what dollars we'll have access to. We just need to make sure that we project appropriately for some of the other variables that can change. Happy to answer any questions, I have a proposed motion. There is as well the final board document. This is updated in the same format. In fact, the next agenda item is a very similar format, where I'll report out the first quarter of the fiscal year, following the same format with revenues and expenditures and disclosing those fund balances.
Thank you, questions for Mr. Sarno? Kurt?
I hate to go back to the assessment piece, but I think that's gonna be big for a lot of taxpayers, because I'm in the same boat as John. My assessment went up 30% on my home in one year. I think a lot of homeowners that are just getting assessed because of inflation are gonna be in similar, some inflations, if they were assessed, went up like this, and then if the City of Jackson, it goes down. You're gonna have some people with increased tax bills and a lot of people with very much reduced tax bills, because we're talking, it's 35% reduction in the mill rate since it hit 797, since we had it there. And then you go down to 520, doing the firm math, that's 34.7% reduction in the mill rate. So your house value would have to go up by more than 34.7% the last two years for you to break even or be ahead or behind. So I just know, that's gonna be, we'll probably feel questions by some, well, you said the mill rates, it is gonna... So my question, I think, is like, for all of our homes, like Jackson, that's a number of homes, if they weren't reassessed at all in Jackson, but a good portion of West Bend was, can you comment more on that, just kind of the...
They are equalized, and so there's a variable on your tax bill where they equalize all of those property values. So it's not a straight assessment. And so I'd wanna make sure then, I think you are right, I think there are going to be exceptions to that, dependent on the property. I think we need to make sure that we're, you know, this, again, I share this on average across all parcels, but I think that there will be situations where those larger assessment, the reassessments, I think they will impact differently.
Yeah, I would assume it's a matter, it's kind of a relative, it's kind of a principle of relativity. I'm not talking the Einstein version, I'm talking about it's, if my house doubled in value compared to Kelly's, I'm gonna be paying more, and she likely is gonna be paying less, in theory, because I'm shouldering more of the burden. But I think the bottom line, and it's true, there are so many variables involved, but the district, the dollars being levied from last year to this year are going down. How it gets allocated among the communities is, I wanna say out of our control, but always a factor each year in calculating the tax bill. And I think what has clouded it, I don't mean that in a negative way, is these recent reassessments in the City of West Bend. You know, and so, yeah, it's, again, bottom line, we've levied fewer dollars. How it gets allocated is a community by community, property by property consideration. Unless I have that incorrect?
Nope, that, no, that's accurate.
You reached, Kurt, I thought maybe you had a follow-up.
That's accurate, and I'm just as conscious to taxpayer dollars. I think we've been, again, the highlights, we have no debt as a district, I mean, we have facility challenges, we have inflation challenges, we have pay challenges, but at least we're in sound financial shape that even people will see, a lot of people will see lower tax bills. And hopefully that'll put them in a good mood about what we're doing with their finances. For those others, we'll have to explain it a little further.
Other questions, thoughts?
I have a question, but I just wanna show my appreciation for putting the numbers together, because it helped me solidify which pieces changed a lot throughout the last couple of years, and so how that, how we got to that number. Because I can look at a piece of paper and see all the factors, but until I plug in real numbers, my analytic brain doesn't, I can kind of then point out, like, pieces that would have moved the needle essentially. And now, by doing that and providing this, really helps, so thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, I was very appreciative of the suggestion, so thanks for that nudge.
Yeah, thanks, June. Other questions, thoughts, comments? Right, this is an action item. So I would move to approve the proposed final budget as presented and levy property taxes in the amount of $39,854,788, which results in a mill rate of $5.20 per thousand dollars of assessed value, on average, across all municipalities and parcels. Is there a second? We were gonna give that one to June. It was a really close one, so, but thanks, Melanie. All right, so we have a motion in second to approve the proposed final budget as presented. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Thank you, that motion carries. We move then to the 2023-24 revenues and expenditures in the aggregate through September 30, 2023.
I have the attached document that takes us through September 30 of 2023. Interestingly enough, it's, there's less than one month of actual time from when we started the school year, but it does represent the first quarter of our fiscal year. And the dollar amounts for the original budget was pending approval of the action item that just took place, so thank you for that. I don't have to make any changes, but they would have been reflected if there was any. This is a very, again, I hope, a very similar format. I come forward on the quarterly basis, there are action on the other two months, during consent with more summary information. But this just gives a little bit more detailed information, sharing the aggregate activity for a period of time through the current fiscal year, and then comparing that to the prior fiscal year during that same period of time. Breaks out the different categories that we have with our chart of accounts, the main areas of our revenues, the main areas of our expenditures. I call them the whats, what are we receding, what are we expending, salaries, benefits? We're receding the local money, money from the state, federal, and whatnot. So have it broken out by the different funds, which are the acquired, again, another area that we have classified, as well, just a few notes for each fund, documenting all of the different information where we see some variances and whatnot. Have very little at this point in time, any concerns in the different areas. And as well, we make sure that we monitor these. We have it now where every budget holder, I think just about every budget holder, receives automated reports from our financial software, Skyward, to monitor their activity on a weekly basis. And if they pay attention to that, and making sure that they're taking a look at the budget actual as they receive those. And then as well, I take a look at the budget on a weekly basis, where our activity is, looking at any of those plus deltas, and making sure that we understand that. But again, this measures the percentages of the budget activity for the different areas. Fund 21, our gift fund, student-led areas, making sure that we understand that. This is always just a little bit of a wild card, in the sense that we have pieces in place of how to document the money coming in and the expenditures going out, but it's really how much activity we anticipate having is the variable that can come into play. Every year, it just seems like it's a little bit more and more, because we have very engaged students. But that's everything, all the way from kindergarten, Matt and Jamie presented earlier. They have a gift fund all the way through the high school that operates in excess of $100,000, a couple hundred thousand dollars every year of money in and out. Fund 27, special education, those dollars for all those students with IEPs, tracking everything. And you'll notice, short of the non-open enrollment tuition, which is a slight variance in the revenues, all of our expenditures are tracking appropriately. About the only variation that I've seen, both in the general fund on the previous page, as well as some of these other activities where we have larger dollar amounts, is just how quickly we're able to spend money and prepare for purchases that took place over the summer that we're now receiving those items. But very small variances on the expenditure side, which means that we're tracking well. No outliers, keeping everything minimal. Bottom section that we have is our Fund 29, which is our Head Start program, again, countywide program. Comparable budget to last year, not uncommon to not recede any money at this point in time. But again, expenditures are tracking where we would anticipate them to be just slightly higher now because of earlier spending over the course of the summer as we've started up the school year. Fund 38, which is our non-referendum debt, no revenues this year, and there wasn't any at this point in time last year, but not levying any dollars for this fund. We will have a little bit of interest income that will be dispersed as we reconcile those dollars. And then as well, we had an interest payment last year, but no principal, which is the April million-dollar payment that will end Fund 38's non-referendum debt here this spring. Fund 39 is our referendum debt, again, no levy. Last year, we did levy just under $6.1 million. We will continue to have interest income coming in that will be reconciled throughout the year. But we've had our first of two payments, one in October, one will be in April, very comparable. And these are all driven by the payment schedules that were made when we incurred the debt. But no outliers with our debt service funds. Capital expenditure fund, tracking just a little bit higher expense this year than compared to last summer. But again, supply chains and making sure that those projects are being coordinated and leveraged appropriately. But again, no concerns as we are spending those dollars. Slightly less budget that we see this year, because some of those dollars are gonna be moved down, if needed, into our 46 fund, which is another area where dollars are being held for facilities-related projects. This year, we are receding dollars, again, healthy interest income across all boards, making sure our cash flow is appropriate, but specific to these funds, because there are dollars being held in an interest-bearing account, but trending very well. Fund 49, these are the Barton proceeds. Dr. Temez was, made a suggestion that we are now budgeting for interest income within this fund for that $540,000 that's sitting there. Again, that interest income will be reconciled periodically throughout the year. It just has not been done so at this point in time yet. Fund 50 is our nutrition fund. Tom and his team are proceeding, our participation is very healthy this year, as can be seen with some of the budgeted expenditures, excuse me, but trending very, very similar, again, very minimal variances when we compare our activity this year to last year, both on the revenue as well as expenditure side. And last year was a typical year that we'll be moving forward, it wasn't the free meals, where we had a very comparable year last year. Fund 73, which is our OPEB, very similar, again, taking a look, we did add back in, as was a part of the budget approval process, the million and a half dollars that was not a part of the revised budget last spring, but very healthy interest income. Our retiree contributions are very similar to where they were last year for this health continuation. And our expenses are up just a little bit, and we're gonna be monitoring that compared to last year, and what that means for the, this fund, because that carries all of our retirees that have that health continuation. As well, we did have some September payments, we're now into the TSA contribution of this for those employees that weren't eligible for the health continuation. There's those expenditures, which we saw, which also is an increase in expenditures, seen as a disbursement. Fund 80, our community service fund, very small variances that we see this year compared to last year, both on the revenues and expenditures, making sure that we're monitoring that. And for that matter, making sure that the schools know that they have access to these dollars, both at the middle school, Silverbrook, as well as the elementary levels, for these services that they can provide outside of the typical school day. Fund 99, which is our cooperative sports, there's an increase in this budget, because we're now the fiscal agent, as was previously discussed. I need to change that title, because it's not just hockey anymore, we're also the fiscal agent for both boys as well as girls lacrosse. So those seasons have yet to start, except for the $175, that's a entrance fee that was already paid, getting ready for a tournament coming up here once fall comes. But no variances there, nothing to worry about. Happy to entertain any questions, if there's any.
Pause for questions. So maybe just way back, way back at the beginning, when you look at the initial page, I know you addressed this, I just make sure that I understand it correctly. When you look at the 2023-2024 original budget, it shows negative, which I think at first glance would say, oh, they're spending to a deficit. But correct me if I'm wrong, there are certain things, like, for instance, the paydown of our referendum debt and interest. We had already raised that money in a prior year, so we're not taking in any more money. But we're spending money that we already have. And so that shows as a negative, even though it's money we have, we had it saved up, it's exactly for this purpose. And it's not adversely affecting the general fund in any way. Do I have that right?
That's absolutely accurate. So the couple of different areas, our debt service funds, a million dollars in Fund 38, 3.2 million dollars. And when we discount out the interest, that's a $3 million. So there's different areas that we have reserves set aside specifically for that purpose. So you're absolutely correct. The other really important part is, and again, some of those funds are duplicated. When we take a look, our revenues are, when we add up all the funds, which is a requirement, again, as we disclose the information to the newspaper and those publications, we have to add up all of our funds, we're $111 million in revenues, $116 million. But when we take a look at that, just as an example, almost $10 million, I'm gonna highlight it here, almost $10 million of that gets transferred from one fund to the next. So there are duplicated expenditures, but number one, we have a balanced budget where it counts, as you pointed out. The second thing is, is making sure that we understand, this is the sum of all the funds up on the top of this first page. It's not necessarily the total of our budget when we take a look at the total dollar amounts. I hope that makes sense.
Oh, it does, I just wanted to be sure, since we just...
Thank you for asking.
Well, we just approved the levy. And I'm assuming the levy is incorporated in here. I just wanted to clarify that someone looking at it might say, well, that's strange, it looks like they're spending to a deficit. The answer is, we're not.
We're not, yep. We ended last year slightly in the black, we are budgeted right now balanced, and we have ESER dollars. We'll continue to monitor that and make sure our general fund is appropriately funded, so we won't be in the red at year end.
Other questions, thoughts? This also is an action item. I'd move to accept the 2023-2024 fiscal year revenues and expenditures in the aggregate through September 30, 2023 as presented. Is there a second? Thank you, Kelly. We have a motion in second to accept the 23-24 fiscal year revenues and expenditures in the aggregate through September 30, 2023. Final discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you for your presentations tonight, we appreciate it. We are on to future agenda items, and here's a preview of our board meeting calendar. We're gonna look at the month of November. So on November 13, we have a regular board meeting scheduled, 5:00 PM, here at the Education Service Center. And on the 14th of November, a policy committee meeting, 4:00 PM, at the Education Service Center. Then on the 21st of November, a curriculum committee meeting, 4:30 PM, Education Service Center. And our second board meeting of the month will take place on November 27, 2023, here at the Education Service Center at 5:30 PM. Any other items to add or correct, Melanie?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that we have a virtual curriculum meeting coming up on Friday, October 27, at 12:15 PM. And I believe the public would be able to watch that online, there should be a login if you log into Board Docs.
Great, you said Friday, the 27th, 3:00 PM?
12:15 PM.
Sorry.
On Friday, the 27th of October.
Thank you. So Lieutenant Wimmer will have a normal notice to the public that's generated, as Melanie mentioned?
Also, the first board meeting that you listed, the November, should be 5:30.
Thank you very much, that's right, that is misprinted here. So the November 13 board meeting will take place at 5:30 PM at the Education Service Center, and that's our normal time. Thank you for that correction, that's a good catch. All right. Who knew the board calendar, it could be such an exciting discussion here, thank you. All right, any questions? All right. Any questions then on the calendar? Hearing none, we'll move to items for follow-up and communication. Anything to add to the agenda, anything for Superintendent Wimmer at this point? All right, if there are other items, feel free to reach out to Superintendent Wimmer, and we'll get those added as necessary. We've reached the end then of our planned agenda. We have an item that is appropriately discussed in executive session. So I'd move to adjourn into executive session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five one C to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and take any such action if necessary based on its discussion, namely compensation. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kurt. We have a motion and second to adjourn into, into executive session. Any final discussion? All right, hearing none. Since this adjournment into executive session, I'll be taking a roll, call, vote. I'll call the roll. Mr. Swiger votes yes. Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Dr. Temez?
Yes.
Ms. Kruger?
Yes.
Mr. Revholtz?
Yes.
Ms. Aragot?
Yes.
And Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries, and we are adjourned into executive session.